Let's call this meeting to order if everyone would please rise for the pledge and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we humbly come before you seeking your divine guidance. Grant us the precious gifts of wisdom and discernment as we navigate the complexities of our roles. In the midst of difficult decisions, may we turn to you for clarity and insight, entrusting in your capable hands, knowing that with your guidance, we shall lead the county in the right direction. Amen. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a request to approve minutes. We have minutes from the October 12th, 23 meeting. We have our April 2nd, April 10th, May 6th, and May 8th meetings. A couple of those are workshops that we held and then Planning Commission meetings. Is there a motion from any of the commissioners?
Yeah, I move to accept the minutes as submitted.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I was not on the commission on the 23rd. I'd like to not vote on something that I was not here for.
Technically, that's not a basis to abstain, and that's why I have to ask the question. All your, you're not approving anything beyond that you've been presented with a set of minutes. If other board members are attesting to you that it is consistent with what occurred during those meetings, your vote is a ministerial act that is necessary for the board to approve it. But it, you can note for the record as part of your vote, which you just did, that you were not part of the commission when it was done, and therefore you can't verify the truth or veracity of those in relying solely on the representation of your other board members.
I will do that. Thank you.
Alright, they pass unanimously. Announcements I did want to bring up, I had talked to Mac and then Stephen about planning, meeting with the planning department to set a date for a workshop for it to discuss neighborhood plans, but Stephen's gone. Max, Stephen's out of town, Mac is gone. So if you could make a note to talk to Stephen about that, I would appreciate that because we wanted to have a workshop about that. Any other announcements from the commission?
Are we going to have a discussion about the monster house regulations changes?
No, they have not been sent out to the commissioners yet.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anything else? With that, we will go to our, it's not agenda item one, but it's our first item to be heard tonight.
Do you want to take up any requests to table or continue, Madam Chair, or do you wish to?
I was gonna wait until Kelly.
Perfect. I know you just called agenda item two, so I want to know whether you wanted her to go item by item or two columns.
No, let's just, for the stuff that has to be tabled, let's table it. For the stuff that's going to be continued, let's have a motion on that. Take those, and then we'll go to your next agenda item.
Thank you, yes. This, yesterday evening, we did receive a request to continue item, I'm sorry, to table items number three and four. Number three is the D and H sand large-scale amendment with rezoning, project number FLU 24000019. The Red Bay zoning is REZ 24000004.
And Ms. Schultz, we can go and do the quasi judicial number seven as well.
Is there, is there a reason for tabling this? This has been tabled for like six, seven, eight times now?
I do believe it was continued a number of times, and now that it's on the table, it, it will, it won't be, it'll have to be brought off the table before it can come back to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, continuing is different than tabling.
Yeah, I understand.
So they're asking it to be tabled.
Yeah, I mean, there were, there were probably several hundred comments, complaints about both of these, so.
And I would, if, I don't know if Ms. Reed, Ms. Ayanna Reed did the review on these, and I believe that she spoke with the applicant about the table. So if you would like, I can ask her to come forward and give you more information on what was discussed with the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So, yes, this project, just a brief overview. It was continued for the last five Planning Commission meetings, and this is a request to table by the applicant. So if you look at that exhibit, it has the applicant's reasoning as to why we have a request to table. I will say that the county is aware of the ongoing investigations that are happening at the state level with this project. And we know that that's something that we've received over 300 comments for.
Right.
So it really just depends on what you all recommend tonight, whether this will be tabled, if you want to honor that, or if we want to move forward with discussion.
Purpose of tabling would be for them to bring it back up later, right? For the applicant.
That's my understanding.
I mean, how does everybody else feel? Do you want to discuss this, or you just want to table it? Because if we tabled it, so what?
Clay, I'd like to step down if I could and go ahead and offer a little more information on the tabling, if that's acceptable.
And you are officially recusing yourself and disclosing that your involvement with the project is something that would prohibit you from serving in your official planning capacity?
That is correct.
Alright. If that's the case, I think we might as well let him hear it since you want some discussion on it. We might as well get it on the record.
In the 60 days allotted to us through the moratorium that was placed by the commission, we've taken that opportunity to meet with the Water Management District, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, as well as their liaisons, and we went to Commissioner Gladwell's meeting. And after talking to the agencies, it is in our best interest to table this for however long it requires for us to get the appropriate permits and resolve the violations that are, that are being assessed by the agencies. Bring it back to before the board with, you know, all of those things cleaned up. That's the intent of this. And we had been continuing with the anticipation that we would, that we would be heard. Whenever the moratorium came about, it afforded us this opportunity to meet with the agencies, and I think this is a better use of the board's time, so it doesn't come back month after month.
Yeah.
And we come back when it's ready to be heard.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, I appreciate that, Dean. The, the concern that I have is that the residents from up there are very vocal against this project. And to have them to be told that we're gonna have this on the, on the agenda, and then we take it off the agenda, like we've done five, six months now, I mean, that's not fair to them, for them to show up.
That's part of the tabling, is to make it understood that we're not gonna keep doing this month after month.
Okay.
When it's ready, and we're ready to be heard, it'll be re-advertised, and it will be heard.
Okay.
Period.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I would note, the Board of County Commissioners did impose a moratoria that ostensibly could have affected what was done with this property. That moratoria has been in effect for at least, I believe that spanned almost three of our meetings from start to finish. So we could have heard something that was not actually able to move forward. That was part of the issue.
Okay.
Still in effect, Clay, or is it?
No.
It's, it's expired now?
It is expired.
The moratoria was for a specified period of time, as it has to be. You'll hear some comments from me about Senate Bill 180 that is pending the governor's signature on a code revision you're gonna be seeing in a few minutes. And I will simply say that no moratoria here and probably anywhere else in the state are being heard till we discern what the governor is gonna do and whether he's gonna ink that bill or veto it.
And to follow up with that, you can find reference of that 60-day moratorium in the compiled continuances document. That's also on the project files. Any other questions?
Do we have a motion on these two items?
I'll make a motion to continue, the request to table, sorry, request to table these, both of these items.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Alright.
Is there someone we should hear from?
Well, tabling, we typically don't take public comment on continuances or tables.
Right. Alright, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? Then we have a recusal. Thank you, Dean. Alright.
Recuse, yeah.
We have another item that needs to be voted on for a continuance.
And while Kelly's coming up, I'll simply say this is the Preserve at Greaton Beach Greenway Corridor Development. The Board of County Commissioners did hear this matter and its authority as the property owner of 1.5 acre parcel of land that does sit to the west of the subject parcel that was subject to this discussion. The board did vote to join in the replat request. However, we were notified after that vote of the Owners Association's intention to seek declaratory relief and potentially injunctive relief regarding their rights or ability to join or not join the replat, and an abundance of caution to avoid the county being plunged further into litigation on this. While we could hear it at our level, the board is not going to be able to take action if that happens. The attorneys for both parties have discussed and agreed that a continuance would be in the best interest of both the proposing party, even though the county said it would participate in the replat, they didn't say they are gonna approve it. They just said they consent to it, in being as a property owner. But we need to let them work through their process, so I would request it be continued to July 10th for the determination of whether or not a lawsuit's been filed or a settlement reached by the Owners Association and the proposing property owner.
Okay.
There you have it. I have nothing to add.
Exactly. Alright, do we have a recommendation by the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to continue, correct?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the continuance.
There you go. I'm good with that.
And to approve the request. And we have a second by Dean or James. Any more discussion from the commission? Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Alright, now we can start with our real agenda, item number two.
Yes, thank you. And for the record, I don't think I introduce myself. My name's Kelly Schultz. I'm with the, with the planning department. And this next agenda item is the Van Dyke Small-Scale Amendment with Rezoning. It has been reviewed by our senior planner, Ayanna Reed, and I'll ask her at this time to please come up and present this item to you.
Thank you.
Hello again. Ayanna Reed with Planning and Development Services, Walton County, REED. So this is Van Dyke SSA with rezoning. This is a request to approve by ordinance, project number FLU 25000024. This is a future land use with rezoning application submitted by Indian Creek Road LLC. On behalf of Linda Van Dyke, requesting to change the current future land use from estate residential to commercial or lesser category, and to change the zoning district from estate residential to general commercial or lesser district on 3.78 acres. Property is in District 3, located at 6192 South US Highway 331, and is identified by the parcel number in your staff report. May I please enter the staff report into the record?
Oh, entered?
Thank you. Okay, having some issues here. Okay, so for Van Dyke SSA, pull up the staff report here. So I will point out that water and sewer is available. Water is available at the city of Dufuniac Springs. Transportation had a few comments. They said that the proposed land use amendment may have an adverse impact on the operations of access to roadways. We don't have any previous actions on this site. See, I do have a comment here under special considerations that for the record, the applicant will have to provide some further clarification to the commission on the availability of the sewer infrastructure, since according to our staff report, sewer is not available. Let's see, there's no conditions of approval, and overall, staff recommends moving the project forward to a hearing at the Board of County Commissioners. Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Ayanna?
Yes, so this future land use does require water and sewer, does it not?
Yes.
And sewer is not currently available?
Correct.
So how, how can we process this then?
So I'll give the applicant an opportunity to address that for you.
Alright.
Because that is a question that we've had, that's why I mentioned it in the staff report, because I'm just not quite sure how they're going to accommodate for the general commercial proposed zoning, so I'll give them an opportunity to address that.
Okay, and also, before we do that, I had a question about the traffic analysis. The traffic analysis, I don't think was in our packet, and I couldn't find it online. So that puts us at a disadvantage as far as assessing the appropriateness from a traffic point of view.
So are you referring to the applicant's traffic analysis or staff? Okay.
Not the staff's, no. And this, this has actually come up before. In fact, I had a discussion with one of the planners about traffic analysis, and they tried to tell me that the traffic analysis was available from EnterGov, and it's, it wasn't. It's not. And I was later told that EnterGov only has documents that are put on there by the county. Anything that comes from the applicant as a submittal is not available to the public, and I don't, I don't understand that. I think the public should be able to see anything that's out there. And that's not strictly related to this project. This is a, a global problem that I think needs to be addressed by planning. And if Stephen Schoen is watching the show, he can take note of that.
And you do make a good point. According to our exhibits, I cannot find the traffic analysis, just the applicant's compatibility analysis and the comments from our DRMP engineer. But I would, I would give the applicant an opportunity to address that too, the potential impacts with traffic, since we don't have that traffic analysis. But you do make a good point. That is something that we'll have to address moving forward.
Yeah.
In terms of that consistency.
So every project, there's an environmental analysis that typically is included in our packets. We get the environmental analysis to understand why we get that one and not the traffic analysis.
Right.
Alright, I guess we'll hear from the applicant.
Yeah.
I'm Bob McGill. I'm here as manager of Indian Creek. The applicant on behalf of the property owner, Linda Van Dyke. Your specific question, Mr. Trigger, was with regard to the sewerage. We have contacted the city of Dufuniac Springs. There's plenty of capacity. They, they issue that on a first-come, first-served basis. The water and gas lines are already and have been in place past our property for a number of years. The ci, the city of Dufuniac Springs has just recently put in another lift station about 4,000 feet from us, up at the new industrial park right north of us. And that's, that's where we would go. When we go to get a development order, that would be a contingency as we go forward to have to tie into that sewer at that lift station. So it is there. There is capacity with the city of Dufuniac Springs, and it's, it's acquired on a first-come, first-served basis. We don't have any particular use for the property right now that we have in mind, so when we come with that use, we would come for a development order that would meet the, you know, the new zoning. And when we did that, we would have that as a contingency of the development order that we tie into that, that sewer line.
Oh, so you would run the piping for it?
Yes.
You would do that?
Yeah.
At your expense?
Yes. If, if we need be, if we can get other people to come in with us, we'll do it, but we could do a small line to it if, you know, if the city hadn't, you know, run a line to us at that time.
I recall a similar project on the Freeport system where the developer actually proposed, it was a PUD application, and proposed that he was gonna install the sewer line. And that was done at the PUD stage, you know, before the detailed plans were available. So I just wonder, in this case, is, are, is there a guarantee that you would be able to run that, that sewer line? I mean...
I don't think we would, under my understanding of the existing county rules, we wouldn't be able to get a development order unless we showed connection to, under this zoning, to a central sewer line.
Right.
So that, that would take place at the development order stage.
Okay.
Right. And there's, I would also add, I mean, there's been, this is where the new lift station went in, but there's 175 acres that are zone commercial right south of us, right at Forest Oak. There's another 10 acres that got rezoned commercial. So the rezoning and future land use along Highway 331 has gone forward because it's consistent with your comp plan and it's compatible as well.
Right.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. McGill. For the record, I would like to say that, that in the general commercial zoning district, neighborhood commercials are allowed by right, and they do not require sewer connectivity, only general commercial uses. So if, if they wanted to apply for a development order for something that fell under that neighborhood commercial use type, then that would be eligible for a development order. A general commercial use, which is more intense, would not, however, be able to qualify for a development order. And that's, that's in the table in Chapter 2, starts on around page 84, that has the list of, of what qualifies as, say, a neighborhood commercial use versus a general commercial use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ayanna, we submitted, I thought Southern Traffic Engineering did, Joe Poole did the traffic study. We will certainly make sure that y'all have that, but I've talked to Ms. Reed several times, understood the package was complete. And if you don't have it in your files, we will certainly get it, but Joe Poole with Southern Traffic did the traffic study as part of our application.
Yeah, I don't think it's a glitch on your part. I think it's a glitch in our system.
Yeah, I didn't understand what you were saying. I'm sorry.
I just want to ask a quick clarifying question. So the compatibility analysis document that you submitted, did you include any traffic analysis within that document?
Yes. I submitted the entire traffic analysis as part of it.
Okay, I'm gonna go online and check right now for you, see if that submitted. Just interesting. Yeah.
Do you have anything else to add about the project? So currently, there's no plan. They just, they just want it rezoned to commercial, but there's no plan for what they're gonna do on the property?
We are, in Indian Creek Road, the applicant is developing some property adjacent to it, and we'll be buying as part of our acquisition, or that development, we're purchasing Ms. Van Dyke's property. And she wanted to move forward with, as part of that purchase, the, the rezoning of the property. But we don't have specific plans, development plans, right now for the project.
So...
For that, for the commercial part of the project.
Right, but, so the property that Indian Creek is buying or owns is estate residential?
Yeah, it would be an RV park. It's right behind that, and we'll have an entrance through Ms. Van Dyke's property.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions or comments for the applicant?
So I do have a follow-up for Fred. There is a traffic impact analysis uploaded by the applicant. It was uploaded on March 13th, 2025, and it's labeled TIA Wood Lawn Amendment. But that document is not on the attachment sides.
Yeah.
Attachment side of the EnterGov, so that you can access it.
Right.
But I just want to state for the record that the applicant did submit that information, so apologies on that.
Side, which side is it on?
It's on the planning side.
On the internal review side, so we'll make sure that we transfer that over.
Yeah.
For this project and future projects.
And all information submitted by the developer, we should be able to see that. Right? And my understanding is that what you're doing right now is anything that's submitted by the developer doesn't get made available to the public, including us.
Not all documents are made available on the attachment side, but if someone requests information, we do have to provide that because it is public record.
Yes, so I have done that. I've done public records requests for traffic studies.
Mm-hmm.
But I shouldn't have to do that. It should be relevant. As a matter of fact, traffic is an important component of any application, and I think it should be included in the packet.
Mr. Trigger, and, and we, we agree with you. We're, we as staff are still getting used to how all of this with EnterGov works. So Stephen is our interim planning director, has directed us to, to start making sure that, you know, the, the primary documents anyway, are moved over. And here's where it gets a little frustrating, and it'll be frustrating for you too, I'm afraid, is that how the applicant names things is very important, because once we just pick it up and, and pop it into the side that the public can see, it may have some wonky name to it. It may be a series of letters and numbers and things like that. So we're, we're just, we're, we're trying to work through it. And, and, but we are moving in that direction, because we do understand that that's important. We, you know, and, and again, just trying to get used to how EnterGov is gonna work. The functionality is very different than what we had with CitizenServe. So we're in, we're in growing pains at the moment, so we appreciate you pointing it out that it's not there and bearing with us, and hopefully next go-round, you'll see an improvement on, you know, from, from us as staff to get that for you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comments for now.
Comments?
I can open it up for public comment if anyone has any, anyone in the public wishes to speak on this Van Dyke SSA with rezoning. I'd ask you to come to the podium, and I don't see anybody, so we'll close the public comment. Commissioners, any comments or questions or concerns?
I just see this whole 331 corridor is becoming commercial. Since it's been four-laned, it's our main thoroughfare, you know, to the south end of the county. Kinda like we're seeing between Freeport and, and South Walton County, all of that property is, is more geared toward commercial and lends itself better toward commercial use. Living on a four-lane highway as a, even a single-family home or, or two homes is not really the best of ideas as far as planning goes, so I would, I would suggest that we make a motion to approve, but keep it open for discussion.
Now, I would second that, but I would like to ask Fred, without seeing the traffic study, Fred, does that, does that, is that of a concern to you?
To see it now?
To approve it without seeing it.
I don't, I don't anticipate that there's issues with it, so on this one, I would say, I would say it's okay to let it go from my point of view.
And for the record, I just uploaded that document to the attachment side, so that way you all have access. Apologies for that.
Give us access to the... Give us access to the other side.
There you go. All right. Any other comments from the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
This next agenda item is an amendment to the Land Development Code related to the short-term vacation rental section of the code. This amendment's been prepared by Josh Allen, and I'm going to ask Mr. Josh to please come up and present this information to you.
Good afternoon, Board. Good to see you again. So from the last time that I brought this amendment to you, we did some more refinement in terms of the total scope of the program and how it's named. Because there's, and this was brought up by our legal counsel, with the certain connotation that certification has, it's, it's kind of, it misleads the public as to what this program really is, right? Ultimately, it's a registration program. Register your short-term rental with the county, right? So we know, you know, so we have these points of contact that we can reach out to and that the Sheriff's Office has been reaching out to. In fact, I just had one today where the Sheriff's Office, we had a, we had a short-term rental with the Crime Prevention Unit. They, there was something going on and they were trying to contact the management company. Well, just so happened, this short-term rental wasn't even registered with us. So did a little digging, ultimately found them. But, you know, it's, it's that letting the Sheriff's Office, you know, the Fire Department have that access to that information so they can contact, you know, the local responsible party, the managing agent, or the owner, if need be, right? As soon as, you know, as soon as they hit, excuse me. So what we did is we ultimately renamed it, right? We're moving it to the Short-Term Vacation Rental Registration Requirements, okay? Nothing in terms of the registration process will change. We're adding the, the ability to have a community certification. This would be used for HOAs or other entities that would like to just register in whole all the vacation rentals within their community. As we stated before, you know, there would be only one sign to, that they would have to post. So it, we're trying to streamline the process as well to make it better for both the customer and for us, what we're going through and reviewing. The, the second thing, and this brought up to, this was brought to our attention last time by Mr. Tricker, with the exceptions, right? The exceptions, and we agree with Mr. Tricker after we did some, you know, analysis, yeah, there were exceptions in here, but they were very confusing, right? So we simplified that to what you see here. Essentially, single-family, attached or detached dwelling occupied on a full-time basis by the owner as an on-premise permanent resident and that has been declared and continues to be declared as homestead by the property appraiser. And what this does, it falls into line with the state guidance, right? So we're moving more towards falling in line exactly with how the state has their licensure system set up. Because we don't license at the county level, we'll be registering in the same manner that the state does. Now, the intent is to then, as we move forward to the board, we are going to move away from a flat fee to a square footage fee, right? So that way, if, you know, owner A has a, you know, 1,200 square foot house that they're renting out, they're not paying this, they, they shouldn't pay, in my opinion, the same as a person that has a 7,000 square foot house, right? Because there's different impacts, right? So greater the impact, greater the size, you'll pay, you'll pay more. So that's part of the whole process. Additionally, with that, because of simplifying the way in which we provide exemptions, then we're going to then be able to bring down the cost as well per, per unit. Right now, we anticipate with the new language, we will be able to, an average home in Walton County is about 2,600 feet. We're estimating about 10 cents a square foot at that, so it'd be $260. Now, we can go down even further based upon if it's within a community certificate, we can go down to a seven cents per square foot for a community certificate. And like I've said in other BCC meetings, we, we're always willing to look at what our revenues are and where we are at and always adjust that as, as we go. Because I think it's important to fall in line with what the board has told us to do is stay as a, you know, zero, so we're not making any money, right? So that's why we're always assessing. This year, we will be right on target for fiscal solvency, which is good. And we have brought up the rates to about 79% compliance rate, and that's based off of what is licensed with the state. So, you know, people could say, oh, well, you know, hard numbers, whatever, what are you using? Well, we're using the licensure data from the state, right? So 80%, essentially 80% of the licensed properties are registered with us right now. And we're continuing to work on that as we go through. Other than that, we cut out a bunch of different other items, but essentially, it's exactly the same as you saw before, just cleaning up and then switching the language. If there's anything particular you have questions on, I'd be glad to provide answers.
Josh, what you handed out?
Yes, sir.
Is this the same as what we got in our package?
It is, except for, I just noticed when I was doing a final review before I came in here, there was just a couple items where I still had gross floor area, but we've updated that to conditioned space. That is the new term that encompasses, you know, that envelope of the house. So everything excluding, like, the garage and the porches, right, is included in that. And it's especially important when we're talking occupancy for the structure.
Question on the exceptions.
Yes, sir.
It refers to single-family homes, detached dwellings with a permanent resident, owner occupied, and is homesteaded.
Yes, sir.
What about long-term, folks that are renting their homes long-term?
That is not, those are already excluded from this program because we are only short-term, which is defined as 30 days or less. Anything, and that's, and that's already in here, and that's directly in line with the state statute.
Okay, so they're exempted by state statute?
Yes, sir. And they are as well as ours in terms of what the definition of a short-term vacation rental is.
As well as if somebody just has a second home that when they're not there, they board it up or whatever, then it's, it's not rented.
If it's not rented?
They don't have to register.
Nope. It's only those properties that are falling to the category of renting short-term, so 30 days or less, and that...
Is that covered by state statute as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
About the fact that with the penalties and the violations, and I'm glad that we're actively pursuing that because we know that there are tons that are, you know, because this is kind of a new program, it's going to take a while to get everybody on board. But they need to understand that because they have to register with the state, they have to register with the county as well, and they need to get on board with this. And I appreciate the changes in language for that.
Yes, ma'am. And to that point, we actually just had our first magistrate, special magistrate meeting, bringing some of our habitual offenders or longtime offenders to the magistrate. You know, and I would just say, you know, it's kind of disconcerting that, you know, when we send people mail and like, hey, you need to register, you need to register, and then they don't until they get a notice of hearing, you know? It's just like, come on, why do we have to play these games? But out of the initial 100 that we were going to take to the magistrate, we only ended up taking nine to him. Everybody else came into compliance.
Is your, yeah, I have a question about, and you, it's through here, throughout.
Yes, sir.
Referencing square inches rather than like eight and a half by 11 sign.
Yes, sir. And the reason why we changed that is because it's congruent with the other language within the LDC. So signs are referenced in square inches as opposed to dimensional sizes. So that, that change was made to fall into line with the other language within the Land Development Code.
It's kind of hard to figure what 94 square inches is.
Well, I, I mean, it's been a while since I've been in, you know, high school, but, you know, length times width, that's what I always say. And the reason why we say that, though, sir, is because there are various communities and/or other organizations, you know, homeowners associations where they have specific requirements for a certain size of a sign. And if we say, hey, it can't be any more than this by that, but they're saying, hey, your sign has to be like this.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it allows more latitude, right? But to still be compliant.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of suggestions.
Yes, sir.
Just suggestions.
Mm-hmm.
Well, one of them is a suggestion. I find this document to be kind of wordy. I think, you know, it needs to be streamlined. There's a lot of language in here that's repetitive. And for example, under interior inspections, it says yearly interior inspections shall not be performed as a prerequisite to certification, whatever, registration. So...
Yes, sir.
So a requirement that something is not required, it's not necessary, I don't think.
And that, and that was put in there, sir, because it's, it's one of, initially, it was a concern by homeowners that were renting. They're like, we don't want to have to, you know, have an inspection. So that was put in there originally to belay those concerns. And also, it's, we, I think it's important to leave it in there because we get that question all the time. And, oh, do I need to get an inspection before I, you know, before I can have my, my registration completed?
Yeah. So I would say if you got the next section says, talks about random inspections can be conducted at any time.
Mm-hmm.
That's all you need to say. That would really simplify things a lot if you went through it and just took out a lot of the stuff that's, I mean, it just, it's hard to read, to me.
Okay.
And, you know, for example, on the maximum occupancy, I did a search for 150, and it shows up five times. You only need to say it once. Maximum occupancy is 150 square feet.
Yes, but there are other references where we had to include it, where it's stating, for instance, you have to post this or put it in your rental agreement.
Right.
We had to put the language there, the official language that, that is from the state.
So all you have to do is say, you have to post the maximum occupancy. You don't have to say what the basis for it is.
While I, while I understand that, sir?
I'm just suggesting it, you know? I haven't spent a lot of time looking at this, but I go through it and it's just really convoluted. So that, that's my suggestion.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely take another look at it.
But I do have an issue with the 150 square footage per person, or rather, one person per 150 square feet, which I believe is grossly excessive. If you have a 4,500 square foot home, I've done the math, you can rent out to 30 people. Maximum occupancy of 30 people. That's excessive for that size of a home, in my opinion. And not only that, but you're also allowing people to advertise that as maximum occupancy. So what that does is people out there going through the internet and they say, look, this place, we can bring 30 people in. How many families is that? Six families, you know? And so that leads to over, overutilization of the property. Because it's not just the cars that are coming in, the people, the noise, but there's also golf carts and bicycles. And I've seen those places and they just got hardware stacked up all over the place. And it's, it's caused partly by the fact that we're advertising really big numbers for occupancy. It doesn't have to be that high, and it's harming our neighborhoods to have it that high. And I know, I know why you chose 150.
Well, it's, yep, state statute, sir. Yes, sir.
Fire code does not relate to occupancy for vacation rentals. It's different. It's a different purpose for safety, for design, they build to that standard. So, yeah, you could theoretically put 30 people in there because you can't sleep them and you don't have parking for them. So that equates, if you look at the parking requirement of one parking space for 900 square feet, that says you got six people in every car.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not what happens. For that 30 occupancy, you know, you got seven cars and three people in each, four.
And if there are more cars than that at the property, sir, that's when they're, they're given a violation.
Right, but it starts from the advertisement.
Wait, what?
That's where it starts.
Okay, yeah, well, I don't necessarily, like, I necessarily agree with you, Mr. Tricker. It is explicitly in the Florida Administrative Code specifically for single-family dwellings that are used as vacation rentals. Like, it's explicit in there. And so that, that's, that's why we use that and because it's, it's a hard, fast state law.
Also in there for condos, I actually owned a condo that came up with this, they were trying to take on this issue of what's the maximum of occupancy for condo unit. And they started out with the 150 square feet. And they brought in the fire department to explain what it was all about. And it's, it was not appropriate for that situation, so they settled on a standard that was based on the number of bedrooms.
Well, and that's where a condominium association?
Yeah.
Has more latitude in which to restrict than what the county can.
The county can't restrict occupancy based on what makes sense from a traffic or others?
We can't, like, I can't say that we can or can't because the, what the state says is 150 square feet per person.
Or fire code.
Yes, sir. And that's...
Fire code, this is not a fire code situation. That's what I'm trying to say. Fire code is you got an assembly hall or something like that, maximum occupancy is 200 people, right? It's fire safety. You can't put more than that. This is where you got people living there.
Well, but this is now a commercial structure, sir. So it falls under the, the Fuller Administrative Code 69 Alpha dash 43, Tax 018.
Yeah.
Which explicitly states those numbers.
So the other issue is, of course, that maximum occupancy might be 30 people. You might not have five parking spaces.
Exactly.
You could have three parking spaces for 30 people.
Even though the structure can hold that much, if they only have that many parking spaces, they have to provide other means to park not on that property.
Right, right. So it makes more sense to be to ratchet down the occupancy limits, what's, what's being advertised, and put something out there that's a lot more reasonable. And, you know, if, if you included, if you said something like, well, if, if you got infants that are, let's say, less than 10 or less than 12 years old or something like that, they don't count towards the, you know, the number of occupants. they don't count towards the, you know, the number of occupants. And that'd be okay. But it's totally, what, what is in there right now is totally unrealistic, and it's destroying some neighborhoods.
While I don't, what I, I don't disagree with you on, on that point.
Okay.
What, what I'm saying, sir, is that because it's in state statute, we are following what state statute says. Period.
Lay is, what he's saying without saying it, that we'd end up in a lawsuit if we, if we put some restriction beyond what the state statute says?
I think he's saying that the safest way to, for them to address this has been to make it conform to the state statute. Whether or not we would be more stringent than the state statute, I don't believe the state prohibits us from being more stringent than the state statute, but we would need to base that on empirical data and evidence. Can't just be an arbitrary or capricious decision. But I think what they're saying is that because the state statute reads this way, they have elected to mirror it for consistency and conformity. But certainly, we can't change and alter and allow more people to go in than the state fire code. If we put in a regulation there, it would be in direct conflict with. I don't believe anything would stop us from being more restrictive in a non-fire code related ordinance, if that's what this board, the county shows, provided you had sufficient data to support that.
And I don't think that'd be difficult at all. And, you know, it's common sense. If you asked a hundred people out there who are, unless they're biased one way or the other, I think ninety-five percent of them would agree that the limits we have right now is totally unrealistic and harmful.
Well, I think I would, I would agree with Fred on this, but is there a number that we can suggest or you guys can come up with, Josh, other than the one fifty?
There, so to give you context, right, last year, the state legislature was trying to have a bill passed, right, pertaining to short-term vacation rentals, right? And as part of that bill, they, there was a, a very convoluted way of calculating how many people could be in a structure of vacation rental. Essentially, it was two people per bedroom, unless it was over a certain size, then you, then you could add another person, then another person per room. But they didn't describe what a room was, right? So while I, I, like, I, I agree, right? Like, yes, a house that, that has, it can hold a capacity of thirty people. Yes, that, that, that puts a lot of strain within the neighborhood and, you know, with, with everybody there. But I don't have that kind of information to, to say, hey, you know, this might be the, another way to do it. We'd have to, we'd have to go back and, and, and look at maybe how it pertains to across the state. I'd have to, I'd have to look into, you know, other counties and see what their regulations are and see, you know, if, if, if it was post-two thousand and eleven, you know, and, and there were rules that were put on the books and how they stood, I think that that would probably be about the best way to do it.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting.
Yeah. But, but in, in order to not belay this process with, with specifically these text amendment updates, I, I will take that definitely into, as something I will put into workload. But in order to not belay this, because this is something that we've been trying to get to the board for a while, I would ask that we just continue with the, the, the state, you know, definition and requirement. And I would definitely do some more digging. And I'll, you know, talk with council about other, you know, ways that we might address this. Definitely.
I, I would give you a suggestion. How about three people per parking space?
Square feet per person is what you're wanting to?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is a lot. That's a lot. What, what, can I ask legal, what, what would be the data, like, what data would make sense? That empirical data, but what, what's that consist of?
Study data. I mean, we could pull it from various different sources, whether it be tourist data, whether we look at any groups that do work with our tourist development groups, whether we, we look at vacation rental management companies. Certainly, you can look at fire code for life safety issues. But there are numerous companies that do this kind of data and research to determine what are acceptable levels of occupancy. And so it could be anything. What I'm saying is, though, when I'm saying empirical data, I guess I'm not looking for one magic study as much as I'm looking at, I pick on Mr. Tricker here for a minute. Mr. Tricker gave a suggestion. Now, his suggestion may be right, may be wrong, but right now it's just his suggestion now.
Want something to support his?
Mr. Tricker may say, why basing it on, I read this following study that was published by the University of Florida on this date that talks about this, which case I say, well, that's what I'm talking about. The difference is between, I'm going to pick a number out of thin air and I have something to base it on. And I would always say that with everything we do, we are better off working with localized data than generic data. We, we run into this problem a great deal where we apply large-scale standards, be it national or even statewide standards. Anytime you can get localized data or analysis, it is better than, it's better than the alternative because it's going to necessarily take into account our road systems, our infrastructure, the number of residents we already have, the number of rentals we already have. It's going to have more specific data to Walton County. What works in Charlotte County may be different than what works in Walton County, given the geography and the demographics and the actual on-ground findings.
And, okay, my comments are, this hundred and fifty square feet was, is not a change because this was in the statute.
No, ma'am. It was in the original, the original ordinance that was passed.
And my recommendation is that we accept these changes now while still pursuing, you know, there's other counties, there's Oaklous County, Santa Rosa County, Escambia County, that all have short-term rentals. I mean, they're somewhat different. They have more cities and things going on within them. But I think, you know, finding out what the short-term. Yeah, exactly. Exactly. So because that's not a change that we're approving tonight, I recommend that we go ahead and approve these changes and then basically task you with continuing to look at that.
Thank you, ma'am. And, and I will look at it and definitely, I, I think Mr. Atkinson brings up a good point. Maybe we can look at some outside agencies that have more free time to complete these type of, you know, assessments to give us better data so we can make the, the correct changes.
So on the other hand, these changes have been out there for how long? How long have we been working this?
Couple months.
Yes, since the last time I came here, sir. I forget the last.
Like March or?
Yeah, March or, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Been a long time.
Yeah.
So how long would it take us to go out and, and do a survey and take a look at what kind of alternative there would be to the one hundred and fifty square foot?
I, I don't know that answer right now, Mr. Tricker. Like, right now, I have three thousand two hundred and, I think it was fourteen, applications in the system right now that we're, that we're crunching through. We, we, we can do about sixty a day.
Yeah.
So that's at least a good three months of work, solid, straight. And then that's not counting the pending renewal season coming up for Miramar, which will add another thousand twelve hundred to our numbers. I, I'm just saying, my, my program, my, in my office, I just don't have the, the time to do it. But what I will say, though, I will investigate based on, you know, Mr. Atkinson's recommendation to look for a company that, that we can pay to do this study, you know, so that it's, also, if we pay a, a, an outside agency to do it, right, it's not tainted by any personal considerations. Oh, yeah, an RFP too. Yes, correct.
Yeah, so that takes a long time.
Yeah, let's.
So I would, I would recommend we hold off on this, not approving it tonight, give you a month to take a look at the options, to see what it would take to come up with a better number for occupancy.
While I, while I, while I understand that, sir, there are some other things that.
We need those, we need those, I, I really think that they need those
other changes.
Numbers, like the phone number, the emergency number, that, all those things that are in here right now that are changes. I think it's really important for us to get those approved right now. Can we do a caveat or can we do an amendment to the, to approve this, that we approve this based on what?
A condition?
A condition, yes.
A conditional approval.
Yes.
Well, that sounds like a good idea.
Can we do that? I mean, I don't know. Let's do a.
It's a recommendation. You're not approving or denying anything, but you can make a recommendation with conditions.
Let's do that.
All right.
So that they can move forward with this.
All right, I would.
Good with that? Okay.
Want to make that motion, Kristen?
Sure. I make a motion that we approve with the condition that we are going to research and find some empirical data to support increasing the square footage per person. That is a long
motion.
Motion.
Second.
Well, you're gonna, you want to do, well, no, increasing it. You want, you want the square footage to be larger per person. So, yes, we're going to increase it.
Because currently, the hundred and fifty for fire safety kind of assumes everybody's standing up in a building and not sleeping in a building. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, James. Any more discussion on this topic? Okay, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes unanimously.
And I will, and I will simply note that to the extent that this could be swept up within those language, the language of SB one eighty regarding restrictions as to development activity, zoning, rezoning, land use rights, we will just patiently wait and see what the governor does, but the board may not be taking action on any of this. But I think prudently you have moved it forward to the board with your recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Schultz?
Counselor, we need to be sworn for this, for these items.
We do. These are quasi-judicial. This time, anyone wishing to speak on the remaining agenda items needs to be sworn. Please stand, raise your right hand. This includes members of the audience that are wishing to ask questions as well as offer testimony. Please repeat after me. I do hereby swear or affirm that the testimony I present will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff and the audience are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, Kelly Schultz on behalf of the Planning Department. This is project number MAJ two five zero 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 three four. It's a major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering on behalf of H and S LLC, requesting to develop a two hundred and forty-six unit condominium building with associated amenities and infrastructure as part of the approved overall DRI, approved DRI on five point six two acres. The project site has a future land use designation of mixed use in a zoning category of coastal center. The project is within the Seescape DRI, which is in District Four. It's located at one hundred Seescape Drive. It's identified by the parcel number in your packet. Will you please enter the staff report into record?
So entered.
Thank you. This project did have a pre-application meeting back in July of twenty twenty-four. The application was deemed complete on February the sixth of two thousand twenty-five. Technical review committee did hear this application on March the fifth of two thousand twenty-five. There were a number of comments that had to be resolved. Those have been resolved. There are conditions of approval that we've recommended, but the, but the outstanding comments were resolved. So this application is presented to you this evening as complete and substantially consistent with the Land Development Code and the comp plan. There is a list of the recommended conditions, both in the staff report and in the executive summary. You'll see that most, that they are related to, there's some planning comments, or I'm sorry, conditions. There's environmental, there are some from the fire department, and even the health department where it relates to the pool. And so in your packet, you do have a copy of the amendment to the Seescape Development Regional Impact. There's, there's the development order in your packet and it was approved. Final development order was approved by the Planning Department on December the nineteenth of two thousand twenty-two. That's a seven-page document. On page one of seven, you'll see item number C. The first page of exhibit two. See that it allows the developer to construct a twenty-four-story, two hundred and fifty-unit condo or to implement option A one, subject to the limitations as referenced in footnote one of the master plan. Parcel A may be developed with a twenty-four-story building slash two hundred and fifty high-rise units, or it may be converted to a thirty-two single-family detached units using the conversion chart in option A one, resulting in a balance of a hundred and seventy-five high-rise residential units, which may be transferred to parcels designated within, I'm sorry, designated with one and utilized for multifamily use. And this is twenty-four stories. It's not two hundred and fifty units, it's two hundred and forty-six being proposed. The applicant's here and can address technical questions, unless you have planning-related questions for me. I'd be glad to turn it over to Mr. Eubanks.
Any questions for Ms. Schultz?
Yeah, this was part of the DRI for Seescape?
Yes, sir, it was. Not the original DRI, but the amendment that was approved in two thousand twenty-two that went through the process of TRC Planning Commission and ultimately approved by the Board of County Commissioners at that time. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Ms. Schultz? All right, then we'll hear from the applicant.
Monday, I had six comments and then they started rolling in. This is a, a stack of the public comments that we've received to date. One was a handwritten letter that was submitted our department. The rest were emails, and I would like to ask that all of the comments, I believe there's a hundred and six, please be entered into the public record.
Okay, so entered.
Good evening, Commissioners. Always have to raise this. Jamie Eubanks, E U B A N K S with Jenkins Engineering. And I'll, I'll start where Kelly left off, and of course, there are already questions about the DRI, so I'll mention some of that as well. But just to give you a quick overview, this is a two hundred and forty-six unit condominium, as Kelly noted. One thing I do want to point out, I, I think she may have misspoke, so this actually was in the original nineteen ninety-one DRI. It was the amendment that was approved two years ago, which gave the option for some single-family or the a hundred and seventy-five condominiums or just the condominium in general. And Mr. Ken Metcalf, who worked on that and is more of an expert on the DRI than I am, he's, he's here, if you do have any questions pertaining to that. Just to give you, so this is obviously a master plan DRI. From a civil standpoint, we're blessed that all utilities, all stormwater, everything's been master planned, everything's to the site already. And there's water available, there's sewer available, there's master stormwater systems, all have been approved, all have been permitted. So all of those are included with the original overall design that goes back over thirty years now. Going to go through a couple of my notes because we did obviously get a number of comments, so I do want to address some of those. You'll forgive me, I'm a little drainage today. First, there was a question about notification. I just want to be clear. All county standards, one hundred percent met. We obviously have all the records of all the green receipts and thick packet that we send out. Copies of all that have been provided to the county. There was some concern from the neighbors to the south, particularly the Surfside condominium. I know about notice, and I do just want to add on to this because I think it's one of the things the developer's done. The Surfside Board of Directors actually invited the owner, myself, a number of other representatives to come meet them after the TRC, so we actually attended their March Board of Directors meeting. So this has been out there for quite some time. We, we met at the Board of Directors meeting. We also met with Ariel Dunes to address any questions, any comments, any concerns. So I do just want to mention that the, the owner has actually gone above and. Um, so I do just want to mention that the, the owner has actually gone above and beyond all the requirements for that, um, and met with, met with everybody. Um, beyond that, there was a, a question about FAR. I do want to point out that FAR is actually, um, related to commercial uses. And in particular, it's actually spelled out in the two thousand and twenty-two development order on, I believe it's page twenty-one of your packet. But it does specifically say, um, the FAR is related to commercial uses within the Seescape development as a whole, the entire DRI. So I do just want to point that out. Obviously, we're residential uses. Everything on site, the pool, um, you know, the small little, um, relaxation areas, all those are strictly for owner use. There is no commercial included in this development. There's nothing open to the public, um, and, and nothing proposed to be open to the public. Um, we are, um, one of the, probably, I would say, the most parked condominiums in the Seescape. The old developments weren't quite, quite as, um, rigorous in their parkings along aerial dunes and whatnot. So we're not actually in excess of Seescape. We're in excess of the county requirements for parking. Uh, we have excess spaces above and beyond. If there's anything else I want to address right now. And again, I do just want to point out, this has been around since nineteen ninety-one, and this has been invested right since nineteen ninety-one. Came back before this commission and the Board of County Commissioners in two thousand and twenty-two again. At that time, all notices were sent out at that time as well. Seescape, I believe they spent over ten thousand dollars at that time on, on mailouts for a number of different reasons. Um, so this has been in the public eye, um, going back over thirty years and more recently, for those, because not everyone is here that time. Um, more recently, it's been here as well. So, this is something that is approved, quite frankly, well before, um, most of the things that surround it in some cases. So, I do want to mention that, but, um, you know, beyond that, I'll be happy to answer any civil questions. If there's any specific entitlements, I might be able to answer them. Mr. Metcalf's here. You have anything for me?
I got a question.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, um, and I'm trying to determine exactly where this is gonna be at within Seescape. I know Seescape pretty well.
So it is the very, if you're looking at it, um, let's just look at it aero-ly, aero-ly, sorry.
Aerially.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Got you.
It is in the very southeast corner of the development.
Southeast.
So, you know where, um, obviously, the South Walton Utility Spray Fields are by chance, coming off of, I believe it's Merrimar Beach Drive? That's to the east of this. There's a large, um, spray field. Um, if you're familiar with where, um, let's say Majestic Sun off of.
Yeah.
It, it is sort of northeast of that, if you will. And then, if you're looking at it, say, from ninety-eight, um, because that's where all these owners have been directed to come from, it's the back-left corner of Seescape.
Any other questions for Mr. Eubanks?
A couple of questions. Um, so you all have checked in with Eglin, and they do not have a concern with this development?
They issued, um, some comments, um, but they did not issue anything of concern. If that's in the staff report, Kelly, I was gonna read it. Uh, Eglin Air Force Base has reviewed MAJ twenty-five, dah dah dah, with particular attention to its height, given that this parcel lies under various USAF and Navy airspace assets. After internal analysis and consultation with Department of Navy, Eglin Air Force Base finds that development is compatible with existing airspace missions.
However.
It does go on. However. Well, it, it's general concern, not specific to this project, regarding increased population densities under various airspace critical. So. They did not have anything specific to this, just a general typical concern.
Thank you. Um, with regard to traffic, um, is the, are the roadways, uh, affected by this project? Um, do they have capacity, or are they constrained, not constrained, restricted? We don't have the traffic study, so I can't.
Well, yeah, correct. So, um, I think we're all familiar with this area and where ninety-eight is. It is, um, this does not further grade it, and I'll point out, one of the reasons why is this has been vested since nineteen ninety-one, so.
What, so there was no traffic study done for this?
The traffic study was approved as part of the overall DRI and the amendment to the DRI.
It was not updated for this specific application?
It was updated to note compliance with those.
Sorry, say that again?
It was updated to note that it complies with the, with the DRI.
Know that it complies.
From nineteen ninety-one.
And two thousand and twenty-two.
So, you're basing it on a traffic analysis that was done in twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
We're not technically basing it on that. We're saying this is a vested right.
Vested right, but that was back in the days when it had capacity out there. It doesn't have capacity now, I don't think.
Uh, I, I would, I would respectfully say to that, Mr. Tricker, that this particular development, and we see this, of course, sometimes, has been in the county system the entire time. So, these trips have been accounted for from day one of their record keeping for CMS.
At twenty twenty-two rates. Or, you're saying that the trips for this project
The trips are in.
Have not changed.
Correct.
The roadways changed.
The roadways changed. The roadways have expanded. In some cases, we have more trips. I'm not gonna deny with, deny you that. Um, but this has been in the CMS system from the get-go.
Right. So, don't you, don't you think it'd be worth taking a look at what the impact is of this project?
Well.
Even though it's, I know it's already in the database. It's already there.
And I will tell you, Seescape is doing some of that. I, I can't speak to it much. Maybe, uh, some of the others here can. You know, there's gate improvements that are going on that'll affect and allow for more trips to come into Seescape, get them off the road faster. That's all part of the overall improvements being done as far as Seescape right now.
Right, right.
Or pending, I should say.
You know, offhand, how much overcapacity the roadways are in that area?
I don't have it off the top of my head. No, sir.
And they, they, I mean, it seems like the traffic's really, really bad down there. There's a lot of condo units to add to that.
It, it is two hundred and forty-six units. You're, you're correct.
I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but it, it's a, I think it's a big concern for everybody from a safety point of view. I mean, the, down to that area, it, it not safe now.
Other concerns for Mr. Eubanks? All right, we reserve the right to talk to you later. Um, we will now open up for public comment. I know there are people that have some concerns. We'll limit your comments to three minutes. Um, I'd like you to be a little diverse in your comments. If they start getting redundant, we'll cut this off. So, um, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Please come forward. State your name and spell your last name.
Name is, uh, John Owens, last name O W E N S. I own a, uh, unit at Surfside fifteen eleven, and I'm also Vice President of their Chair, of the, the Board. Um, our main, our main issue right now is just the notice that was given. While it was given, we've, uh, after looking at it, we realized there were probably thirty to forty units that were not within, that were within the three hundred feet, uh, ownership, that were not notified. We looked, pulled, uh, went to the webpage at the property appraiser. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We went to the webpage at the property appraiser, and we did notice immediately that it does state that it shouldn't be used for ver, address verification. And then we went to the next level, where you pull the residents within three hundred feet of your property. And the GIS mapping, GIS mapping that does that also has a disclaimer that it shouldn't be used for anything other than ad valorem. And when we pulled the map, we realized that Surfside is a sixteen-year condo, and on top of it, they did a, um, a horizontal graph, or har, um, and that's the way, then they numbered. This property appraiser then numbered those units based on their horizontal, uh, graph that they laid out. And that graph is how they're pulling the units that are within three hundred feet. And when they're pulling those, that has no relationship whatsoever to where those actual units reside in the building, because it's on a, a horizontal spot that's not even laid on top of the unit, or the Surfside, um, building. And what we noticed, the discrepancy, for example, sixteen eleven was pulled and sent a letter. I am fifteen eleven, directly under them, the exact same distance. I did not get a letter. No one in the eleven stack, other than five eleven, received a letter. They received a letter, but no one else did. The same thing happened with the twelve stack. Sixteen twelve, sixteen ten got a letter, but all units below them directly, the same distance, did not receive a letter. And then when we looked at the grid that they, the property appraiser had found, um, formed, and that's where the error was, the way they numbered the system, is that our units, like fifteen eleven, may have been way back in their numbering system. So it didn't really accurately reflect where the ownership of that unit was. And as another anomaly, we, as I said, sixteen eleven, the eleven stack is the closest units to that property we're talking about, that, that, um, applicant has. One unit that was pulled, six oh one, which is in the southeast corner of the building, the most front unit of the building, which is outside the three hundred, um, feet of the ownership, of the applicant's property. So what we're saying is, just the way the property appraiser has, uh, done their mapping system, and they disclaim it and says it shouldn't be used for this type of stuff, is erroneous, because it doesn't truly reflect where the owner, the actual unit is owned in the building. And the same error is exacerbating itself in the fact that these letters have just gone out for the Board of County Commissioner meeting on the twenty-third of June. So basically, you've got owners that are not being available to their legal rights because of this error that's sitting in the, uh, property appraiser's GIS mapping. And there should be a better way, or at least, at this time, should be continued to redo this and properly notify each owner of their legal rights, so they know what is going on. Not every owner attends our board meetings or pays attention, but they do get their legal notices, and they would have, be more prepared to actually comment, to look at the issue, and see what can be done from their standpoint. And that's why we're, um, that's our main concern right now, is that notice was deficient, only because, or because the, the way that the, uh, mapping is done on the, uh, property appraiser's website, which should not be used, as they disclaim. It is not a survey. It should only be used for ad valorem and no other purposes, basically.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
I, I have a question. Um, should they send out, uh, notices to everybody in that building?
Uh, logically, the way I think about it, you would say yes, but I know the rule says you do it within three hundred feet of the property, like the applicant's property with three hundred feet.
Right.
Personally, as a multi-story condo, I would say yes, because if you do one thing that affects one unit in the back that's related, it's going to affect every single unit in the building.
What I was thinking is that, uh, uh, the people that, that are outside the three hundred feet are still impacted by the development, because it affects the whole building, and they're, so it's a condominium, so they're part owners.
By, our bylaws, they have common element, ownership in every piece of property that's not individually owned by an owner.
Right, so technically, they're are within three hundred feet, even though they're specific units.
I would say that, yes.
That's, that's what I was trying to get you to say.
Yes, I agree, I agree a hundred percent with what you said. Um, I think that, um, every owner should have been notified, but by the rule, there were, I would say, thirty, we, we have, trying to count them on the way down here, thirty to fifty owners that were not notified properly of the, um, by their legal rights through a certified letter, whereas you had some owners outside that three hundred-foot, uh, boundary that were notified, that under the rule should not have been notified.
Right.
And, um, I, I think, and like I said, it's exacerbating itself now, because these notices have gone out for the Board of County Commissioner meetings, and they're erroneous, and, um, I think they should be redone to where they get proper notice for everybody to get their legal rights and understand those, and know that these meetings are going on. As I said, everybody does not always listen to our board meetings, participate in our board meetings, or sometimes they don't look, pay attention to our emails.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, let's have Mr. Eubanks come up. I want to ask him a few questions on that topic.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Owens.
I'm gonna take this somewhat out of order, Mr. Eubanks, if Madam Chair will indulge me.
Sure.
The indicated persons outside of a designated range received notice. Do you have any explanation for how that would have happened, or why that may have happened?
I do not. I can tell you that we follow chapter, you have it probably handy more than me, chapter one. Um, and we pull it from the text role, um, and advertise it in that manner, and I just had the list. That's a signed notice. Now, uh, chapter one point one one oh five A, uh, the certified mail notice is what we follow, um, and what we followed in every project, and in this case, specifically, the certified mail notice, um, indicating that it should go to properties within three hundred feet known to the latest approved ad valorem, ad valorem textual.
How was the three hundred-feet calculator, Mr. Eubanks?
I believe our staff pulls it from the appraiser's website and then verifies it.
Are you, are you testifying under oath here today that that is, in fact, what occurred in this case?
Yes, I believe so. I am. That is where they pulled the information.
And with that regard, you've heard statement that certain people did not receive notices. Is it your position that those notices have been sent but simply not received at this time, or is your position something different?
My notice is, my position is we send it to everybody on that list, um, certified mail. I do not know whether everyone has received their mail. I know that there were some complaint, complaints that sometimes the post office wouldn't give it to them when they went to got, get them. That was one of the calls I heard this week. Um, all I can testify to is, is the list matches exactly what we mailed out, certified.
Can you tell me when you pulled the list to do the mailout?
Uh, two days before the deadline, I believe, on the top of my head here. Um, it was May twenty-ninth, we pulled it, would have pulled it on the twenty-seventh, um, if my dates are correct, but it was two days.
So we're within thirty days of today's hearing in any event?
Absolutely.
You've heard the assertions today that there may be insufficient notice for this and/or the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Is it your request on behalf of the applicant to continue with the hearing in light of those? Um, or is it a situation where you would be prepared to continue the hearing um, with no additional notices to allow time for any notices that were sent to circulate out and come back?
Uh, the applicant would like to move forward.
Board, we have sworn testimony that he says he mailed a list that was well within the timeframes required by the code. This is not a situation where they pulled it so far in advance. It allows potential error to creep in. We've had that before. Um, that's question one. Um, he's asserted that his staff measured the three hundred feet and mailed that. That is under oath. Um, and he has asserted that they have followed the mailing requirements of the county. The persons who have appeared certainly have actual notice, in the sense they're here. They have an opportunity to talk. My position to this board is always to err on the side of caution. If there's a legitimate question about notice having been sent, and the right phrase there is provided, I want to be very clear, was notice provided, it's not was notice received. If the board feels notice was not provided, um, or that due to some factors that may be outside the control of the applicant or the general public intervened, that could have caused this issue. Uh, I believe it could well be within the board's discretion to continue this hearing to a date certain, which would mean all notices would remain in effect. The county would simply re-advertise how it notices these meetings. There would not be new notices sent. There wouldn't be anything new done, but it would allow more time for those that may have received notices at the proverbial eleventh hour to do so. I do not wish to make the board's decision or provide an extraneous fact to the record, but I will offer a few observations of those factors that I referenced that could be external factors beyond anyone's control. Work stoppages, perhaps. There's postal strike. Don't think there was one, but that could be an example. Holidays, that could affect mail delivery. I'll let you weigh that in on the timeframes used. Circumstances where there is a known issue with the receipt of mail to a designated issue, to a designated receptacle, for instance, where a large building has a designated receptacle and they weren't delivered, and that can be attested to by a board. Lastly, I would note that if there's a circumstance where you have pers, you have a large number of persons appearing saying they received the notice on the day of and made. saying they received the notice on the day of and made last-minute arrangements to be here to tell you that, there's a substantial number of people saying that, then you may have some reason to believe that while they complied with the strict letter of the law, the spirit and intent of the law, our ordinance to provide notice, was not complied with through no fault of anybody else. So, I mean, what you're looking at there is something that the developer couldn't have controlled, the public couldn't have controlled and happened. The board thinks that happened, I think a continuance is something you could consider. It appears that was effectively what was asked for by the prior citizen. I would tell you it is not a basis to deny project. But I do always caution that we need to make sure adequate notice occurs. And I will also go ahead and I will caution, perhaps admonish is the better phrase, the developer, that you've asked for it to proceed today, Mr. Eubanks. If this board does allow it to proceed, they are only making a recommendation. If these same issues persist to the BCC, not this issue, but additional notice issues to the BCC, I would well expect the BCC's position to be to amend this to the planning board for another hearing here, as well as another hearing at its level under that. And that would likely be my recommendation, absent any additional facts. But so, board, what I will tell you is, I've not heard anything that plainly states the notice was not provided. Uh, doesn't mean people didn't receive it. So I'll defer to the board if it wishes to take action on the citizen request for continuance as advanced. It is well taken if you so see fit, but it is also a situation where the developer is not gonna be sending new notices or re-notices, um, if that happens. I'll leave that up to you, Madam Chair. He, he's relinquished the podium, so that's.
No, I have some comments to make. I, I.
It's just on the, what Mr. Eubanks said on the list, the notice. I'm not on that list.
I know. I know. I understand, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna reference that here in a second. Um, I think, as Mr. Owens pointed out, that the eleven stack, I mean, how a sixteen could get something but a fifteen-four couldn't get it, that, to me, is problematic. And my concern is that there were over a hundred comments received yesterday. So apparently, there is enough concern in my mind that notification was not adequate, adequately given. As, uh, Mr. Atkinson pointed out, if we do choose to continue this, there will not be additional notification. It would have to be word of mouth within, you know, buildings or whatever. I think it's kinda crazy personally that if you have a building and only the corner of the building is in three hundred feet, to me, the bu, whole building should be notified if that th, building was within three hundred feet, but apparently that's.
It's by address. I will say that. We do have to operate by addressing. I guess it's entirely possible. I, I, you know, you, you raise an issue that I don't know that I've ever encountered, and logistically, it does not make great sense, but it is by address, not by singular building. And candidly, as I think through it, while it doesn't make logical sense, I'm not sure how we'd ever be able to enforce the alternative, because you still have to work with a radius. Well, okay, everybody in that building gets it, and then the answer is, well. But the house that's on the same piece of property as the building that are the single-family residences around a condo don't get it.
Right.
I, I don't know how we can make that happen either, so.
Yeah.
But I see your point, and I do think you are addressing the issues I commented on.
Right.
So I'll leave that to the board if they wish to take, if they wish to take a motion at this time on that issue.
So that, go ahead, Fred.
I'm, I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Eubanks' argument. He followed the rules. He did exactly what he was supposed to do. We've had other instances where people didn't follow the rules. He did what he was supposed to do. Problem is that the system's flawed. That's not his fault. It's not our fault either. And it's not the fault of the people that live there. An unfortunate circumstance that I believe if I were the developer, I would volunteer to ask for a continuance and make sure that everybody in that building got proper notice. Just out of, out of an abundance of caution, I think that would be the right thing to do.
Well, we have.
Well, you can certainly make a motion on your own if you wanna continue it in light of this.
Give him an opportunity to.
Assume this is the applicant.
Yep.
Oh.
So, this Chandler Huff with H and S. Um, I do agree with Fred. I, I'm not trying to get out of the notice deal. We noticed back in twenty-twenty-two. We sent out notices in twenty-twenty-two. We had the same thing. People said we didn't get noticed. We went and did it all again, spent another seventeen grand, noticing everybody again for the hearing back in twenty-twenty-two. We had a meeting in March twenty-second, I think, of this year with the Homeowner Association at, at this particular location, with the board, addressing all the issues. Never was the notice an issue at that meeting. Yesterday or the day before, they started getting bombardment with emails to the planning department about the project, which has been notified twice in twenty-twenty-two. Had TRC meeting, had comments from TRC. We went and had all the planned meetings that they asked us to go do with all the adjacent people that they wanted us to meet with. We did all that. So.
Yeah, we're not asking you to spend another seventeen grand on a re-notice.
No, no, as far as the notices, I don't care. I mean, if it's, if the board wants to continue it, when, when would we be able to get back on the agenda?
It'd be the July planning.
By tenth, in a month.
Okay, so if we continue on the July meeting, can we do the same thing and go on the Board of County Commissioners meeting the same month?
If we do that continuance, we could. Staff would absolutely do those advertisements.
Okay. Well, then let's just continue.
Any reason you see not, Ms. Schultz? I'm gonna let, Kelly's looking at me. I wanna make sure she's not trying to give me the side eye. You're saying something crazy.
I'm not. We had, um, at the, at the request of the, of the owner, we had gone ahead and scheduled this for the June twenty-third, uh, Board of County Commissioners meeting.
So it'll be the Ju, it would be the July land use meeting, which is the.
Yes, whatever date that comes out to be.
Because we're especially in the May meeting, and we didn't make the May meeting because of the environmental landscape issues. We're late getting in, so. And then they put us on.
But it could be the, it will be the July land use meeting and the July planning commission meeting.
Both meetings in July.
Yes, which is what we were trying to do in June, as Mr. Huff had said. We, he, he was under the impression that he would go to the May meeting. We didn't have the environmental comments cleared, so as our policy is, we don't bring it. We don't advertise for your meeting until all of those comments are cleared, and it's, it's, it's a, the application's complete. So, um, as, um, you know, trying to work with the developer and move the application along, we went ahead and scheduled both meetings in the month of June, which we don't normally do. It's not our practice, and we don't want it to be our practice for reasons just like this. Because if we don't, if, if planning commission for some reason has to advertise or has to continue it, we've already advertised for the Board of County Commissioners meeting. My staff report for BCC had to go in today, so they've got a report that does not have a planning commission recommendation on it. So we'll have to now go back and.
Amend that, yeah.
Well, I, I think it's too late to amend.
Right. It'll, it'll come up at the land use hearing.
Okay, so Karen's telling me it's not too late, so.
Okay.
Okay, so after we leave this meeting, I'll go do a continuance memo, and hopefully it won't be as big of a deal as I was concerned, because I was really worried about it going forward without some sort of recommendation from the planning commission, because the Board of County Commissioners does take that under consideration.
So then, are you, Mr. Huff, agreeing to a continuance?
As long as we can make both meetings in July.
And Ms. Schultz said that.
I think staff just confirmed that will happen.
That can happen.
And I, I would note now, if we do this, just to be abundantly clear for everyone who's listening, who's here in person, and for the applicant, this is to cure the notice issue.
Right.
If this comes back up, we still didn't get notice. We still, it's abundantly clear. There's no finding on the record. They didn't comply, so they have complied. It's a matter of they are exercising a continuance. The board is recommending it. They're offering to do it. I don't believe the applicant should then be forced to want either re-notice or go through additional steps or delay if this effort is given. If he's doing it, this is a one-and-done. Get everybody ready to come speak and have a full hearing when that time comes.
Okay. So do we have a recommendation from the planning commission?
We need a motion.
A motion.
I'll make a motion to continue this for thirty days to the July meeting.
July tenth, okay.
With the July BCC being advertised along with it.
With the BCC meeting being advertised along with it. Okay, so we're, we're noticing both then. Okay.
We have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion from the commission?
Yes. Uh, one thing that doesn't relate to this vote, but I think, uh, we need to, uh, look at changing the notification requirements to say that if there's a building that's partly involved in a three-hundred-foot radius, or whatever the radius is, the entire building needs to get the, uh, notice. That's just a glitch.
Because, and I heard what you said, Clay, about it goes by address.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm just making something up here, okay? Let's say the address is six thirty-five Pompano Street, unit sixteen-eleven, okay? Well, fifteen-eleven would also have six thirty-five Pompano Street, unit fifteen-eleven. So six thirty-five Pompano Street would be all the units within that building.
I know, but each address is assigned a unique parcel ID number, and that's how they generate it. However, to Mr. Tricker's point, give me a little bit of time to think about what way that can be done logistically correct. I don't want to open a ru, a whole set of unintended consequences, because my first suggestion, I'm glad I bit my tongue and didn't say, because I've already figured out that can't work, but we can come up with some ideas.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, any more comments by the commission? Okay, all those in fa, favor of continuing to the July tenth meeting signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Absentions. Okay, it was unanimous. Thank you to everyone. Thank you to everybody who came. But now you have your notice that we're continuing this to the July meeting, which is what the requests for most of the public comments were. So I guess it's up to you all to make sure that there's not gonna be any re-notifications. So those of you like Mr. Owens that did not receive notification, you know, get the word out. Okay. You can speak to me after the.
The, the county has it. The county will provide public credit.
We have, we have the, yeah, the county has it. We just haven't had time.
Yes, I moved that over, so it should be on the public side. It'll be, um, it's labeled something to the effect of, um, BCC affidavit. Uh, and there's also the PC affidavit.
Perhaps if staff, Ms. Schultz, if anybody will provide their email address, they have left it from the, they have to send it. You have my email?
Yes, sir, but would you, would you shoot me an email and just remind me, Mr. Owens? I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Um, anything else from the commission? Hearing none, we are officially adjourned. Thank you all. Yeah, we did.